Seeing as it is now 8:05 on the 23rd of October, we will start this organizational subcommittee of the police and fire, police pension fund. Today's agenda has one main point of discussion, which is the pension office board secretary As you know, from the last many meetings that we've had in here, this has been a topic of discussion involving kind of the job classification and the history of the position that Susan and Tanya occupy. We would like to go ahead, I think, after the last regular scheduled meeting, the September meeting of the board, we decided that we would bring it back here for kind of one final cleanup, so that we could push this all the way down to the city council. My understanding is, is that by now, we've all agreed that we'd be pulling them from, and if somebody could help me with this term.
Unified pay plan.
Unified pay plan, thank you. I was going to butcher that and make up something. The unified pay plan and move these positions out of that, which gives us more in line with the understanding of the Kentucky revised statutes that say that the board will set the pay for that position. I think this alleviates a lot of problems, and again, after some study, it feels like that probably at some point, we've gotten to this, we've gotten to this spot where we've made some assumptions over the years. There could have been some precedent set where we, where we elected to start allowing those pay raises incrementally as everybody else. So this, hopefully, will be the last time we meet on this until we take it back. Okay? So I believe we've got somewhat of a template as to pull them out of the unified pay plan. And at that point, I think it's, it all relates to several things. We want to talk about the pay, which we had been voted on in a regular scheduled meeting. And then there's my understanding of pay range, that would be the topic of discussion too. And then what we do about employees moving forward, the title. And I think that's pretty well a summary of what we need to decide here. Is that correct? Does anybody have anything that they need to add to this?
We'll also establish a class code and a paid grade number, but I have suggestions for that.
Okay. I'll let you educate my stuff on me and that and some other folks. Okay. Initially, we had discussed outside of here whether or not this would be a matter for a, an executive session, since it involved pay and an involved employee. These are public records, and it's not discipline, it's not new hire, and it's not involving some real estate transactions. So I think we're gonna, the latter's to determine that we're not going to be in executive sessions, we'll be recorded. I'm comfortable with Tanya and Susan staying in here either way. If everybody else, I don't know if we think that would be, make this a less of a biased decision-making process about what we're doing. If anybody would like to speak up now, please.
I just think we should note that whatever we're doing today will be the basis for our recruitment efforts in the future. So whether that's a third member, whether Susan and Tanya eventually move on and are not in these positions, that this will be what sets the stage for how it's recruited in the future.
Correct. And I, and yes, I'll echo that by saying that, you know, decisions can't be made on a personal level, they have to be made, as we all know, in the positions that we were elected to do or appointed to do, to this board as fiduciary thereof. So without further ado, it was elected a few, at least two meetings ago, to make the pay with a 16% increase in pay to both positions. That's when some of the turmoil of this conversation got started. The part that I need to hear probably from either Erin or Tammy would be that, what is the pay range and how do we establish that, I guess?
So the pay range in the unified pay plan is established by studying the JPQ, and that was completed in the last compensation study for the entire government. And at that time, it was determined that this position would be in a grade 518.
Can you remind us of the range for that?
Yes. The range for 518 is 23.786 to 35.679. And I believe it did move up from grade 516 in the study as well.
These numbers that you've given with the decimals, those are hourly?
How are we?
Okay.
I'm assuming that's, they both landed there with their pay raises?
Currently.
No?
Well, with the, with the 5% we receive, but not with the 16% per.
Okay, got it.
So 49,474 to 74,212.
Annually.
49,474 to 74,212, correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I just use hourly because they're non-exempt.
Sure. So as I understand it, when we pull the position out, we would need to set a code for that. So we had talked about code Z like the council administrator. And then we would need to set a grade for that code. If it's Z, does it have to be the same as the council administrator?
It would not be the same as the council administrator. It would have its own, because it's not a council administrator.
Okay.
So once you establish the new job title, it would have a new classification code and a new code for the pay grade. So there are two separate codes.
Okay.
I propose a class code of 075 and a pay grade of Z75, which has no bearing on anything except that this is a separate classification.
It's just a title?
It's just a code that goes along. All of our job classifications have a job code or a classification code.
Okay. And essentially, this is being, this code is being created just for this position.
Correct.
So you mentioned the title, and I guess maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse, perhaps we should have started there with the title, or are we okay to kind of work through some of this pay stuff now? And then the name is the name, is that, you know? If this, if this is the code that you, that your office wants to use, that only makes, it makes sense to me.
It doesn't have any bearing on anything else.
Sure, right. Okay. So with that being said, then, the election was made to add the 16% increase in, in pay. If we have those numbers, where does that, do you have that handy of where that puts us for the pay for each person?
So Tanya's proposed rate, I believe, is 30.5, oh wait, I have it too. 30.545 hourly, and that is within the range currently of 518. Susan's proposed rate with the 16% increase is 38.67, which was outside the range of grade 518.
We've established through some dialogue that, that is the reason again, why, why that's, why we're here, and so in part. So by stepping outside that grade and taking them out of the unified pay plan, the grade is irrelevant now, is that correct?
Grade 518 would not be relevant once it's changed.
Okay. All right. Are there any further discussions on the salary and then the range? Do we have to set with a grade now, the range?
Yes.
I think that's what I'm looking for. Can you, I don't even know where to start to begin to make this. I mean, I know where their target should be right now, so how do we set a grade? And I'm assuming that when we say grade, that that means a, an hourly rate below even what Tanya's will be, and then even a little bit higher than even where Susan's will be, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's for future, you know, whenever we, if we replace somebody or add someone?
So it looks like there's $25,000 in, in the range.
Currently.
Currently. So 518 starts at 49,4 and ends at 74,2, and so it's like 24,7 in the in-between. Is that typical for our ranges?
Ranges, we have about a 50% spread, yes.
So is there a maximum that it can be?
No, the board's setting the range.
So then the issue becomes, well, if you do it on that formula, the issue becomes what's your minimum? You raise your minimum and go the amount, then it may take care of itself, or it may not, depending what the minimum is.
Right. Well, I, as I understand it, we don't want to set a range that's high enough that the board wants to make a decision that then we exceed in Z75, or whatever it is.
Correct.
So I, the top end seems to be the question at the moment, but the bottom end will be the question.
Yeah, you can get there the same way.
That's right.
Yeah. I think the committee. But your point about recruitment is, I mean, what, what would, what would it take to bring somebody competent into door tomorrow that start now? I mean, that's part of the analysis, too.
Yeah, these are all the questions that are going to be asked. But I, obviously, no background in setting a range and understanding the difference.
And this is for a future of discussion, not for today, but at some point in time, when you look at the job description more closely, you may be talking about whether it's an hourly deal or a salary deal. I mean, but you're, that's not for today, that's for longer-term discussion.
Yeah. Well, there were several mention, several times it was mentioned, comparison to our grade 521 in the unified pay plan. So that range.
What is that range?
Is 27.536 to 41.303, or 57,274 annual to 85,910 annual. And those pay rates would be within that range.
Can you say that again, Tammy? I'm sorry.
The hourly is 27.536 to 41.303. And that's $57,274 to $85,910, and some change.
Well, that seems like a pretty nice target, doesn't it? With what we know the current hourly is going to be, and I'm comparing hourlies at this point, since we started there, you know, we've got to get in one camp and go that route. I mean, that range seems to work, I can't see where there would be an issue, and if I'm not mistaken, to your credit, is that that was a discussion that was made even before, if that could be the grade that we would get to. So I mean, that, I don't see where there's a negative here, but also, I don't want to be too shallow in our thinking, because I don't want the six years, seven years down the road that we're back here revisiting this.
Well, as long as you're raising it, as the government does it raises, that should take a much longer period of time to get to that conversation.
Okay.
Correct.
When you're talking about raising it, like if a 5% raise or something?
Yeah, I defer to her, but I think the range moves when they do that, but I don't know if it moves the full 5%.
It does not.
I think it might move half of it or something, but, but they keep moving the range up every time the government gets pay raises. They'll move the range with it, but I don't know that it equals the amount of the, of the pay raise.
It doesn't typically, no, but it's, so for example, this summer, we had a 5% across-the-board increase, and we moved all of our salary scales 2.5%. So it stays, it keeps the pay range competitive, and also allows people to still move within the range, so they don't stay in the same position in the range.
And as long as you're doing that, it'll, instead of being six or seven years from now, it'll be like 15 years from now when you're having this conversation, aren't you?
Correct, and I could see, yes. Or this also adds some element of where we want it to be, like what we're trying to establish here. So if this board's different, and it could be very well in two, three years, that they understand where we are in this. So I mean, I think that's as much important as anything, so. I may be off, I can't see a problem with moving to that range and just assuming that range of the 521, without assuming that range, right, or going into that.
Right.
I think that's, there's some justification on how we got there, too, so. Is there any questions about that? Tommy, does that seem okay to you?
As long as, you know, it continues up, I mean, I'd like, I'm like him, I don't want to be coming back here for 54 years, you know?
Part, part two of my conversation is to discuss that, I think, so. As long as we're kind of okay, I think, so far now, in what we have a code and we have a range, then I think it would be wise of us to decide. I'm interested in the idea that, that these positions would still get the incremental raises that all the other city employees would get. And I don't know what your people who've been pulled out of, out of this before, what that looks like, but how do they, my first question is, do they get raises annually? And if so, then would that still be okay for them to get those raises annually? If that's a 3% raise, or a 2% raise, or 5%, whatever other folks in this have done?
I think if the board establishes its policy and provides it to human resources, then we would provide the same incremental changes to the range and across-the-board increases.
To me, that seems like the right thing to do.
The one position that has, that's set aside like that, is written in, we have to remember to write it in every single time we do something. But they've also not had the council opt to change it, or to supplement it, or to move it.
It's written into the, the across-the-board increase ordinance as a complete, separate, so it would, it would be a whole of our line in that ordinance that says to adjust the scale for this position and also the across-the-board increase, provided the possible.
But that was happening before, right? Because they were a part of the plan, I mean, it was happening, it was happening because they were part of the unified pay plan before.
We have to list it.
We have to call her down.
Every time we write it.
Right, I get it.
Every time we write it, when we leave Stacy, or, now she's not here anymore, but Stacy out, she'd call and be like, "Hey, don't forget me."
Right.
And we have to write it in.
So again, the way that I have this concocted in my mind was that we would do exactly that, that they would get the incremental raises annually, or whenever other city employees would, non-bargaining, I guess, however that looks. There's so many different titles here, so help me with it. That they would do that, and then at a five-year look, that we would set something, be it in our rules and regs, add that to it, that as a board, we reevaluate on a five-year plan, whether their pay aligns with other positions, similar to your JPQ process and all that. And that way, the board then feels like they still have control over the pay, at least in some regard, and making sure it's fair. This obviously creates twofold. One, in my mind, it doesn't allow for, you know, a biased performance raise, where, you know, annually, we're going, "No, we're doing this, well, Tanya made me mad this time, so we're not going to give her this," you know, or some derivative thereof. This automates our process and allows us to kind of pass the buck, so to speak, for a five-year window, and then those people get to come back, whatever that organizational subcommittee looks like then, and review whether or not that pay is in line with other positions, and then reevaluate internally what we feel like their job functions are, and if they're getting compensated fairly. So are there any concerns on that?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. It sounds like we're there. Let me make some notes here.
Do we need motions for any of this?
At the end?
Probably. We'll get it all signed.
Yeah, I'm making some, yeah. For the sake of my language here, the, when I say the all other city employees, what is the appropriate word?
Employees in the unified pay plan?
Depends on what you're talking about. Wordsman.
When you're talking about across-the-board increases, we say all full-time and part-time employees in the unified pay plan. But yes, it matters.
Okay.
We don't want this talking.
All right, which brings us now, I think we've settled the pay. Is there any further discussion on pay, incremental raises, you know, every five years, we're going to reevaluate that? Is there any other discussion? Tommy, do you have anything? I'll start with you, see if Alex has some.
Well, something that we're going to probably add in my committee on the legislative is, that, you know, what it talks about is just strictly a secretary. I mean, obviously, this plan is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're going to have to probably hire more people down the road. We may, I'm thinking about changing something to allow us, instead of, you know, like administrators or whatever you want to call it, changing from secretary to administrators, and allow us to where we don't have to go down and ask every time we want to do that. I haven't got, that's just in my mind, I haven't got quite down pat what I'm going to be asking for, but I will sit down and, with Susan and them, and we'll discuss it and see what that, that change would be.
Any future positions that are similar, would they fall under this new category?
They could. They're established. Probably create them the same, if we wouldn't study them.
Yeah.
I just, you know, don't want to keep going down there every year, you know?
This is.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to get them mad at us.
So kind of in reverse order again. Now we're going to get to a title, and I think this probably has some subcategories under it as well, understanding that it's not just a name, and that it could affect recruiting and how we hire new folks into these positions. The term administrator has been brought up several times, because I think the role has changed from what maybe was loosely defined as secretary before, and now is more in line with the term administrator. Would it, the, the name be, does it seem to this subcommittee that the name would be police and fire retirement, police and, police and fire retirement board administrator?
Why?
I know, it's a lot.
Pension administrator.
Pension administrator. Just pension administrator?
No, she, I think the mayor wanted police and fire in front of it to designate that it was for this one.
That makes sense.
Is what I think she was really pointing on.
Nothing concerned about. Between the statute, too, because it leaves police and fire in it.
Okay.
It's not.
Tammy, do you have anything?
I think based on the research that we performed and that MAG performed, pension administrator tended to, and even in some of the information that was provided, imply the financial aspect of the administration of the pension.
Okay.
And then I think the recommended title that we had was benefits calculation specialist, and that that matched more with, I think, the jobs that were right in Ohio as an example.
And I have some of those other cities there with me here. Erin, do you have?
Yeah, I, I think I threw out the administrator name in our meeting, but then going back and looking at the differentiation between the items that Chad does, and Phyllis does, and Winona does, and I do think that there's a difference. And when I looked at some of the other positions that were listed, there was a heavy emphasis on managing the investment portfolio side, and all that relationship and fund transfers and that kind of thing, which doesn't really rest with this office or these positions.
Okay.
So.
Is analyst allowed the term?
Well, let me ask you this, if, if we lifted administrator, I mean, in our.
Description.
Rules and regs, we can define exactly what they are, what their job description is, you know? And that way.
I think they're more worried about when you put it out next time, that you're going to draw in people that think it's one thing potentially, and it's not. But I, it doesn't really matter to me, I mean.
We have a lot of positions that encompass the full administration.
Well, I mean, they do take care of the checking account, you know, the small one, paying bills and all that, so I mean, you know, they do, do a certain amount. They sure don't, you know, do the investment part of it, but they do do some of it, so I mean, I think it'd be, I mean, God, down the road, who in heck knows what we're going to be doing, you know?
Sure.
You know, I mean, I definitely don't want to get like, you know, CERS, where they have, the, the members of the committee don't even make, you know, the, the financial part, they have a group that does it, tells them what to do. I mean, like, you know, and I'm like, uh, I don't like that, because my neck's on, you know, your neck, my, all our necks are on there, and we start making bad financial decisions, you know? If I'm going to do it, I want me to do it, and that way you can blame me. I don't want to be blaming this committee over here, or this group.
Presumably, in the event of a new hire, there would be a description that would be included with the application process, which could clarify, clarify what the job is even for and what it could be about.
I think when people look for jobs, though, they do keywords, and title is really, we find that in a lot of situations. Title is really, really important when people are looking for positions. And they see that before they read through directions, which is also important in a job search, but it's just how it happens.
Yeah.
You can be dismissed, Tommy. All right, so I'm looking here at the administrative review form here. There are about 15 or so, 16, 17, maybe. I don't think you, do you have that in this?
Yeah.
All right. What is that, 3, 6, 9? About, like I say, about 15 or so different places here, and I'm pretty certain there might be about six different ways to call it.
Specialist, analyst, was some, one of those ones, yeah, one of those.
So with that being said, Erin and Tammy more specifically, I, listen. To me, the, the name isn't as important, there's some other facts of this, okay? But I understand the importance of it comes from recruiting and filling those jobs, and then just the overall description. So again, what, what would be the recommendation? Do you both collectively have a recommendation to bring, bring to us? If administrator's not, not what you see fifth, if you think that's just a bad, bad idea, then I'm definitely willing to hear it. And again, kind of going off of what we had in the meeting, I thought administrator was kind of the, the direction we were in. I can see why, but do you have any, is it specialist, is it assistant? It's sitting there, I would think it's assistant, right?
Well, we call people in the government officers for some other stuff, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily want to call them.
I'm looking for something here.
I have to stand behind what the CAO provided, so it's benefits calculation specialist.
Let me write that down again. Of course, it would need to have police and fire in front of it, I'm certain of that, it needed to be prefaced with that, benefits, so that, again, I think in accordance with what we said that the mayor's decision was, they would need to say that, so.
Outside of recruiting or retention, does it really matter what they're called? I mean.
I think it'll matter for your all's comparison purposes five years from now.
Okay.
Because you're going to want to pull like positions, and, you know, if the position includes the investment component, you might not have that full status.
Right.
But I still think, I do think it's part of all of these, I think there's pieces and parts, you know, Susan and Tanya have pulled out some of this and some of that, and some of here and there.
Because it's so broad, you know?
Yeah, it's just.
And we don't want to be detrimental moving forward, you know?
And we'll say during the research on the appeal, that our position encompassed, like you were saying, all three of these. So under Ohio, we did something from every one of those, and which is why they're kind of listed.
Right.
A combination of every one of those jobs.
Is it possible to use pension benefits specialist? Police and fire pension benefits specialist? That encompasses not only calculations, but insurance, et cetera?
Phew. I never remember that one.
Benefit specialist, sorry, you took it, Susan and Tanya.
At the end of the day, I mean, let's be honest, so we're, in my mind, we're coming up with the legal and the official name of this, we're dealing with people who are going to continue to call them either secretary, or as the police and fire actual membership, active membership, just refer to them as Susan and Tanya up at the pension office, you know, like, I mean, it's great. To me, that it doesn't matter. I mean, I'm giving you an issue, my name's not even Trey, fun fact, right? Like, I mean, that's what I go by every day. You see what I mean? Like, I, so I think we need to get this right, I do, and I think it may not be exactly what everybody was looking for, so, but that seems to be a happy medium, police and fire pension benefits specialist. Yeah, I think the, the term calculation, I think that adds something to it, and that shortens, this shortens it a little bit, so.
And takes something away from it. And takes something away from it. The calculation part just makes it sound.
Yeah, that's right.
Like, that's it.
That's it, right, and that's not all it. So, benefit specialist, which would encompass, you know, payouts and everything. I don't know. I'm, this works for me.
I was just going to say, I think the mayor wanted Police and Fire in front of pension administrator, and it doesn't need to be maybe in front of this one.
Okay.
If not, I mean, I could be speaking out of, maybe it will because it says pension.
I think so, too.
I think it's going to have to have.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Police and Fire Pension Benefits Specialist.
Somebody else.
There is another pension board.
You know, it could be.
I think that's what her intent was.
Because here's my, here's my business card, you know. I'm okay with that. Does that seem okay to everybody on this board?
Yeah.
I'm not even going to look at Susan and Tanya, because that's what we talked about.
I do have one question out of, just pure ignorance, really, being the new guy. The, how much is this bound by KRS? Because I read statute all the time. From what I recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it says secretary. Is that going to be an issue?
No, so what'll happen is, there'll be an ordinance that encompasses a lot of this stuff, and will clearly spell out in the ordinance that it's that statutory position or positions. So, it'll tie in that way.
And I'm hoping to change it, or, or definition, or whatever.
Yeah, change it to whatever we want to do.
I mean, what, if there's going to be a change, the simplest thing to do probably would be just to say you can hire whatever boys you want.
That's, yeah, basically, that's kind of what, I agree with you.
I don't think it dictates in the statute.
Well, it also doesn't.
It doesn't preclude you necessarily, but it implies, it implies that you'll have, and it also implied that it might be a member of the board and all that other stuff, but, yeah, it probably would be good if we're going to go down that route, to just open it up, so that it's clear you can hire whoever you want.
I think you're, I think that's what I'm.
I just don't want us to make a decision to be hamstrung by KRS in the event that somebody, for whatever reason.
Well, I mean, you know, you've got to understand, that statute was in 1973, and that's what it set, you know, we had the police, very much.
Sure, things have changed.
The role of that position hasn't changed. Like, it has changed, but it, there's still someone functionally in that spot by KRS. So, yeah, as long as we cite that, I feel like we're good.
I always suggest, when I saw that.
I think that's very.
And then, you know, in our rules and regs, we should have, state what these people do, what their job.
It just description you. Technicalities.
Yeah.
I've already thought about that. That's why we're going to, we're going to put it in the subcommittee, and, and I think he's right, let us hire, you know, who we need, and go from there.
So.
It matches the KRS, so if we're not changing, KRS can't change anyway.
We, so there may be like a smaller issue, like, of just cleaning up where all this stuff is in our code, you know, which is not really material, it's just, and we'll, and we'll, my thought would be, when we have it packaged together, we would just show it to the board before it goes to the council, right?
Yeah, that's.
But, I mean.
I don't know that that even.
Yeah, there, there's some other references in the code of ordinance to this position, we just want to make sure everything's consistent.
But to your point, it's straight from the Kentucky revised statutes, the language is. But we just title it in our, in section 2255, as Secretary of Board of Trustees of Police and Fire Pension Fund, because it mirrors that language.
We can look at that when we, in the legislative camp.
If, if there, if there need to be any changes, I'd probably go ahead and change it with this.
Yeah, right.
But I don't know that it has to change.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, anyway.
May I make a motion?
Uh, yes.
I make a motion that we title our new positions Police and Fire Pension Benefits Specialists with a class code of 75, and a grade of Z75, to set the range at 27.536 to 41.303, or 57,274 to 85,910 annually. And I further move that we accept any and all increases given annually, or benefits otherwise, to non-sworn members with a five-year look back by the organizational subcommittee for comparison purposes on these positions. So, moved.
Is your second?
I'll second.
All right. By roll call vote, you're on the committee?
Yes.
She is now.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Motion carries. Is there any further discussion? For the greater good of the whole?
I have a question.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
They'll send me a memo.
The, I know the pension, hold on, the council administrator gets comp time. Are we going to, are we going to be in that same scenario, or are we still going to be able to get overtime? I'm just, that's just a question.
Very valid. How does that work?
The most recent study was that the positions are non-exempt.
What does that mean?
That means they're, they're hourly and eligible for overtime.
That's a, that's a separate legal analysis that has to be undertaken, based on what they're actually doing.
Yeah.
At some point, if they actually undertake more of the stuff that would, or probably less of the stuff that they do, but that's all in flux now, because the, the feds are looking at raising the amount anyways.
They're looking at raising the minimum requirement.
Yeah, so.
Annual salary.
It used to be, it used to be if you made more certain amount of money, you're automatically treated in the one category, and that, that amounts, they're looking to probably raise it, so. But you all are, you all are, you all are overtime eligible right now, and that'll, that's how it'll stay.
We're solely in discussion of this at this point, but let me ask, and I'm glad you're here now for this, but how often do you find, do you find yourselves going beyond a 40-hour work week, or having to work some off-schedule where there's a Saturday or a Sunday? Is that even a thing? Has that happened at all?
We do work Saturdays, primarily for Leosa, but we try to flex out our time.
Primarily for who, I'm sorry?
Leosa.
Leosa. It's a, it's a consigliere for the police department, for retirees. So, we work the range down there. So, we do that on Saturdays twice a year. And then, we've recently done open enrollment meetings after hours, and so we usually try to flex out. My only concern is like with payroll. If payroll's ringing on Saturday or Sunday and there's an issue, I get pulled in. I've already, I've already reached my 40 hours, so I can't, don't know how that works, because I'm already over my 40, but yet normally overtime is approved.
Okay.
So.
This, this one thing has now got me a few more questions. If everybody has a few minutes here.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So, with the Leosa thing, what do you do there? What is that? Like, I don't understand what they're doing, but what are you guys?
We do the payroll work. We also verify that if they go out on a disability, that they're allowed to shoot.
Okay.
They verify if you're qualified to, to get a Leosa, carry concealed.
Yeah, there's certain.
The, the, the feds specifically state what you have to have.
Right.
You know.
Interesting, okay.
You know, what the qualifications are for that, so that you can get it.
I have more questions, but this is not the time or the place for that. So, back to, and I understand that, and I have asked you, you know, in times past, and the reason I bring this part up is because I've been, moving forward, I would like to do this again, where we have an evening time, or sometime where there's an educational element from your office. Because when we brought on Tanya's job, I was extremely adamant that we involve you more in the education of our pension than just the elected members. So, direct this to you, if you're able to flex time, and we think we refer to that as comp time at the fire department, is that kind of the same thing?
We flex time.
Okay, that means that within the same pay period, you would say, I'm going to, I know I've scheduled this three hours, I need to be here, so I'm going to get to come in three hours late today. Is that?
Right.
Okay. And you can do that currently, is that correct?
We do do that.
All right, then, we'll let that subside until I come up with another question about it, the second part to this. By doing all of this, we didn't change the lineage to who you guys answer to. So, you would still answer to, if I'm correct, Ashley currently, which is a deputy of Ms. Hensley, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's going to stay the same? There shouldn't be any changes there? Okay. I don't have anything else.
I mean, you know, you know, loss, you know, if they got their 40 hours in, we're going to have to pay overtime. I mean, that's the way it is.
Which sounds like it's probably a rarity.
It's just when, nine times out of 10, it's, it's, it's a payroll issue.
Just like anybody else.
That she'll run payroll on Saturday or Sunday, and if there's.
Most of the thing, you know, like, you know, they, they're playing out quite a while. I mean, you're like this enrollment, that was done a month out, or something like that, you know, and you flex for that.
Usually that would probably be payroll.
And Leosa, you know, you know when that's going to be, once in the spring, once in the fall. So, you gotta, you schedule for that.
And every effort should be made to plan for it, and then use the flex time. I mean, that's how.
And we usually do. My only, my only issues is usually with payroll.
And as long as you report the hours and the paid overtime, then they're all.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we clear this up. There could be some kind of, something come up at last minute, but I, I'm trying to, I can't think of it, but there occasionally does, I think.
With your presence here today, in the absence of any further questions, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.